Good evening, everyone. I call the regular meeting of the Menifee City Council to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember August. Councilmember Leesmeier.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Denver.
And Mayor Mann.
Here.
For present and unabsent, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. And we have words of inspiration this evening from Bishop William Stevens.
Our dear Father in Heaven, as we come before Thee this night, we're grateful to be here in this chamber meeting with our city council and the good people of Menifee. Grateful to have the youth of Paloma Valley here as they learn of local government and pray that they will utilize their time and learn well those things that are here tonight. Grateful, Heavenly Father, for those good men and women who serve the city of Menifee, especially those who give of their time and their talents to make sure that our cities and streets and schools and all are safe here, especially those who protect us. And especially tonight, as Lisa Sobek is sworn in as a city council, we pray that she will serve Thee well and be strong in her decisions and support those that who have voted for her. We're grateful for this Christmas season and time of Thanksgiving as we reflect on the many blessings we have. Might we be reminded of those blessings, where they come from, to always remember, especially Thy Son, Jesus Christ, His love and atonement for us. Pray now that we'll enjoy this meeting, that those who speak will be respectful as they come to the podium and that we'll enjoy this council meeting. This prayer we offer, and we do it in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Bishop Stevens. Before we all sit down and do the pledge, please join the council in a moment of silence for the shooting victims in San Bernardino today. Thank you very much. Mayor Pro Tem Denver, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Please join with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, do we have any modifications to the agenda this evening?
No, we do not.
The agenda is approved, as posted. We have no presentations tonight. Do we have any public commenters?
Yes, we do.
Please call the first speaker.
First up is Victoria Lopez.
Good evening, everybody. I'm here on behalf of Assemblywoman Melendez and Board of Equalization member Diane Harkey. We are hosting our annual holiday party on Tuesday, December 8th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. And in case you guys didn't already get an invitation in the mail, there's some out on the counter in the lobby. So, we hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Next is Cassin Klein.
Mr. Mayor, city council staff, been awhile since I've been here. I come tonight to praise your staff on a couple of points. As you may well know, we are about wrapped up on Commerce Point. The grading's been done. We've got pavement down on Zider's Road. Striping's been done. And we're moving forward conceptually with doing a couple of spec buildings. We've been trying to wrap up a punch list of items and our MMRP, or mitigation monitoring report. And I had to go over some things with Lisa Gordon. So, I first want to compliment Lisa because we had scheduled a phone call, she and I, last Wednesday. And she had an incident at home, which didn't allow her to come to work. However, she sent me an email and said, "Look, I can't make it to the office today, but if you still want to do the call, I'm happy to do that." And I thought that was very professional of her to take time away from her personal matter, knowing the urgency from Commerce Point. So, I wanted to publicly praise her because I felt like that was above and beyond anything that a staff member should do. Secondly, as you may well know, the city of Murrieta is processing an environmental impact report for Kaiser. Kaiser's planning on building a three-phase, large project right at the border of Murrieta and Menifee, Keller Road and Antelope Road. Both of my clients have previously provided comment letters, as the city did, the first circulation of the EIR and subsequently to the second circulation of the EIR. And I've read the second letter from your city staff. Hopefully, you have as well. And I cannot praise the staff high enough on that 11-page letter. It was incredible. So, without going into detail, which I'm really not qualified to, to be very honest with you. Lastly, I would just, you know, development is often controversial. Traffic is often controversial. And folks of Menifee, if you're concerned, if you're impacted by the Scott Road 215 interchange, I cannot implore you enough to get a copy of this letter and read it and comment on it. It is, it's not only a Murrieta or a Menifee issue, it's a regional issue. And the Menifee staff has done an outstanding job at doing it, and it's something that needs to be addressed, in my humble opinion. So, staff, great job. Mr. Mayor, city council, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Next speaker, please.
Next up is Katie Manier.
Good evening. I just want to take a moment and thank Greg for contributing to being able to send that package off and include a lot more things. Several of us ladies that crocheted all year sent 19 scarves handmade to the troops, along with innumerable boxes of sanitary wipes individually wrapped. That's a big need with them. And we hope to do that same thing kind of again this next year. And your help was valuable in doing that as well, and I appreciate it. Then I have a couple of concerns. They are, I guess, putting in a traffic light on Antelope and Garbani. And where they've, coming north on Antelope from Scott Road, they've made a right turn lane there. And that right turn lane is too narrow for a car to even be in that lane. I think it's going to pose an awful lot of problems and a lot more accidents at that corner. I called Public Works the other day and left a message and haven't heard from anybody. But I think that needs to be looked at again because a car is still out in that next lane. And then I have another issue in the city, just with the problem with tumbleweeds. Once this wind kicks up, it's going to be a real issue. We had one day where Newport Road was pretty bad with tumbleweeds blowing across the road. And I called and I was told that there's not enough money to take care of weed abatement at this time of year. They do it in the spring, when everything's green and pretty. But we need to do it again in the fall, late October, November, when the tumbleweeds are dry and the winds are kicking up because it is an issue and could cause some real traffic problems. That's just a concern to me, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. Ms. Manier, we agree 100% with you. I think maybe there may have been some confusion with your discussion with staff. We do a weed abatement mail-out to those affected properties, but our Public Works Department's on the street every day clearing out weeds. So, we'll make sure that we make that a higher priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Next speaker, please.
There are no more speakers.
Thank you very much. Onto councilmember updates and comments. Gentlemen, do we have any updates? Mr. August.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to make a brief comment about, I want to congratulate and, what do I want to do? I want to thank the Community Services Department from the city of Menifee, the Interfaith Council. I want to thank the volunteers and Mr. Falco for the effort on Thanksgiving Day to feed the people, feed the people of Menifee Thanksgiving Day dinners. It was a tremendous success, but I, for, and all the volunteers, for everybody, many of them who are tonight. So, it was a tremendous success. And I do want to thank the Community Services Department. They were open on Wednesday night for us to set up for the operation. They were all day. They were there all day Thursday. So, I do want to appreciate. And again, thanks to all the volunteers and probably a special thanks to Mr. Falco, since he paid for most of the activities. I think we served 267 meals. And there were scores and scores of volunteers. We had way too many volunteers. So, it was a successful event, Mr. Mayor. So, thanks to all of you for that.
Thank you, Mr. August. Mr. Leesmeier?
Yeah, I just want to echo Mr. Klein's sentiment to staff. I did read that 11-page letter to the city of Murrieta. And there were quite a few issues with what that project was going to bring as far as impacts to our city and Scott Road specifically. And a lot of people talk about, you know, when Scott Road going to happen? When's it going to get fixed? When are we going to do something? But I just want to, I just want to share that it is a very long, lengthy process through the environmental documents and things like that. And in reading that letter, this staff could not have a better handle on the issues. And let me just tell you that they're all over it. And we're not going to rest until we get something going out there.
Thank you. Mr. Denver, Mayor Pro Tem.
Want to congratulate so many people in Menifee. I won't go into it. For this Christmas tree lighting ceremony that's coming up, there've been so many meetings by staff and citizens preparing for that. There's so much work done on that. Plus also, the Santa Claus gift event at Quail Valley. Must been eight, 10 meetings on that. And the fire department's working overtime on it. Thousands of presents being collected at stores. It's really going to be a wonderful season.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I have nothing to share from a regional report with any updates or comments. Onto approval of minutes. Are there any modifications to the minutes of the meeting of November 18th? Hearing none, those minutes are approved. Onto the balance of our agenda, the reorganization section of our agenda. Agenda item 10.1. Madam Clerk, is there a staff report on Agenda item 10.1?
Yes, I do have a brief report. The item before you is to declare and certify the election results. District 3 had a councilmember vacancy and the city council adopted Resolution 15-451 to call a special election on November of this year. The, there were four candidates for the one vacancy. Four candidates qualified on the ballot, and Lisa Sobek had the highest number of votes. A little bit of statistics. There are 8,844, at the time of the election, registered voters in the District 3. And there was a low turnout. It is, it was a special election. So, there was a almost 19% turnout. And just for fun, I just put up the statistics for a regular election for District 3 in 2012. You can see the turnout was much higher. And that is it. And staff recommends the adoption of Resolution 15-491, declaring the results of this special election. Available for questions.
Are there any questions of council to staff?
No, we rule.
We have a motion by Mr. Leesmeier. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. August. Call the roll.
Councilmember August. Councilmember Leesmeier.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Denver. Mayor Mann.
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Onto Agenda item 10.2. Administer the oath of office to incoming councilmember Lisa Sobek. Madam Clerk, would you do your duty as the chief elections officer for the city?
Okay. Raise, raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, Lisa Sobek.
I am Lisa Sobek.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm. That I will support and defend. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies, foreign and domestic. Against all enemies, foreign and domestic. That I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance. That I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully. That I will well and faithfully. Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
I would like to present you with a certificate of election. Congratulations.
I think Councilmember Sobek, you would like to carry a family picture. Ms. Gonzalez, could you help orchestrate that? Sure.
One, two, three. Disneyland! Thank you.
...
So, while everybody is getting settled back in, I just want to share with those who may not be privy to the process. Municipalities, every December, they do a reorganization. And especially after an election, there's a reorganization that takes place. And you may notice that our former colleague, Councilmember Edgerton, his photo is no longer up that, on that wall, right there. Councilmember Sobek's picture will go there. But our colleague, Councilmember Edgerton, will be placed on that wall at the next council meeting. And that's how we, that's how we transition. That's how we do that. And that's how we record the history for those that are in the audience. And I, along those lines, I just want to recognize Mrs. Judy Edgerton, who's with us tonight to see this transition, to fulfill Wally's spot. And before we go on to...
I just want to congratulate Lisa. This is who Wally wanted to have, is to fulfill his position. And I'm so sorry we spent all that money on that election. But thank God that you are going to represent my husband.
Okay. Excellent. Excellent. The, I, at the end of the day, I think the special election costs the city of Menifee less than $12,000. So, you can't put a price tag on the people electing the person that they want to have sit up on this dais. So, that's democracy. So, what we have is, at this point in the agenda cycle, we extend the floor. We have a roll call, Madam Clerk, of the new council.
Councilmember August. Councilmember Leesmeier. Councilmember Sobek.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Denver.
Here.
And Mayor Mann.
Here. And at this point in the agenda, the floor is yours. Councilmember Sobek.
Thank you. Thank you, Honorable Mayor Mann. And thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. And thank you for the council for letting me take a couple of those pictures. I appreciate that so much. I'm honored to be able to serve District 3 as your next councilwoman and to help make Menifee the very best that it can be. There are a lot of people, well, first of all, I need to go back. Today, as I was thinking about what I wanted to say, and I was, my heart was really full because just so many people started going through my mind who helped me through this journey. And the faces of so many people in District 3 that I met at their doors. And I, I couldn't have done this without the support of my wonderful and fantastic husband. And I have to thank him first, number one. And he went many nights without a home-cooked meal, which he's used to. So, he's the best, and I appreciate him. And then my family. You saw my family here tonight. Most of them are here. We've got a few who have commitments that weren't able to make it. But most of them are here. And all, well, 10 of our 11 grandchildren are here. So, I'm glad they're here and they can see this process. And I want them to know their grandma loves them. You heard from Mrs. Edgerton. I want, you know, it's kind of a, little bit of a sweet and sour that Wally's not here anymore with us. But I, I appreciate him. He taught me quite a few things as being a planning commissioner and being involved in the community and shared some things with me. His wife, Mrs. Wallace Edgerton, she likes to be called, was actually my treasurer. And I, she was there for me the whole time and gave me words of wisdom and advice. And she was just great, and I appreciate her. A friend, and also my campaign manager, Lori Stone. She, she was a rock. And she just knew what she was doing, and I appreciate her. The people in the community, those, like I said earlier, those faces of the people that I met in District 3, I want to thank them for their votes, for their support, and their faith in me. It was said earlier by Cassin Klein about our wonderful staff. And they are absolutely wonderful. I've had the privilege of working with them as a planning commissioner, Jen, and many, many more of you. And appreciate, Bob, all of you and the professionals that you are and the kind people that you are. Mayor Mann, thank you for making me your planning commissioner and giving me this opportunity. And then a few planning commissioners. Matt was on the planning commission with me before he became a councilmember. We've got a couple of planning commissioners here tonight. And I want to thank them for their support and the opportunity to work with them side by side here, making decisions and working together. We were a good team. And look forward to seeing great things from you. So, I look forward to serving with our fellow council. Since I was 12 years old, I've had the opportunity to work in councils. Anything from youth councils, student councils, all kinds of councils. And one thing I've learned is that councils counsel together. And I believe that true leadership is service to others and not self. And I will do my best to represent the people of District 3. I believe in being honest and having integrity. And I will continue to live my life that way. Something that I said during the campaign, and I've said it a lot over the years and in the, in my many different job capacities, is that we can all make a difference for good. If we all do a little bit, a lot can get done. But it's not a good, it's not good enough just to be good. We must be good for something. We must contribute good to the world. The world must be a better place for our presence. And the good that we, that is in us, must spread to others. Let us work together to make the city of Menifee the best that it can be. Thank you.
So, like I shared with then-commissioner Leesmeier as he transitioned to the council, and I'll share the same with you. You've served on the commission admirably, from the heart, with conviction, with character and integrity. And there's no doubt that you'll do the same as a councilperson. And we're glad to have you on the team.
Thank you. I look forward to it.
Excellent. All right. With that business being done, now, if guests want to transition, you can do so quietly if you want. We do have some high school folks in the lobby that need to get credit and signatures on their forms. But the council is just going to go ahead and roll on to the agenda and get our business done. And if you do decide to depart, please do so as quietly as you possibly can. Thank you very much. Onto Agenda item 10.5, as since this, we're still in our reorganization phase, selection of the Mayor Pro Tem for calendar year 2016 for this next cycle. As the mayor, I'm going to make a motion to nominate Councilmember Greg August as the Mayor Pro Tem. May I have a second?
I'd like to second that.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll on that?
Councilmember Leesmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Sobek.
Aye. I was saying goodbye, sorry.
Councilmember Denver. Councilmember August. Mayor Mann.
Aye. Thank you all very much. Greg, I look forward to you serving as the Mayor Pro Tem and filling in on about five or six meetings that I'm going to miss next year. Just kidding.
You didn't get my memo?
No, I didn't get the memo. You, you didn't want the job.
You can't miss any meetings for a year. And my personal chauffeur will be picking you up at your house prior to every meeting. So, thank you very much. And to the, to the council, thank you for your confidence in me. And I'll sit up here and try to do as good a job as Mr. Denver did. I want to thank him. And I want to thank you for your confidence you've shown in me. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. August. Onto Agenda item 10.6. Madam Clerk, would you please re-read the, do you have the list of appointments? If not, I can articulate what those are.
Yes. Riverside County Transportation Commission, RCTC, the representative is Mayor Mann, and the alternate is Mayor Pro Tem John Denver. The Western Riverside Council of Governments, WRCOG, and WRCOG Tump Program Zone Committee, the representative is Mayor Pro Tem John Denver, and the alternate is Mayor Scott Mann. Western Riverside Regional Conservation Authority is representative is Councilmember Matt Leesmeyer, and the alternate is Mayor Pro Tem John Denver. Riverside Transit Agency, RTA, is representative is Councilmember, or Mayor Pro Tem August, and the alternate that you would like now is Councilmember Lisa Sobek. Riverside County Habitat Conservation Agency representative is Councilmember Matt Leesmeyer, and Mayor Pro Tem Greg August is the alternate. ParsAC representative is the city treasurer, director of finance, with the alternate Mayor Mann. Did you want me to also state the council standing committees?
No, because we actually did those in a previous meeting, in a briefer reorganization earlier in the year. But before I ask for a ratification motion, do we still have to appoint someone to represent the city at SCAG, the Southern California Association? When they have meetings, can we appoint somebody to that? I know the, the regional bodies that we're on sends representation, but do we need to have somebody duly appointed? Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. What we've done in the past is lightly tapped somebody on the shoulder as the committed party from the city. I don't think it's a technical representation, but it's somebody who would go to those, that conference and bring that information back.
Well, if there's no objection from the council, I would like to add, then tap Councilmember Sobek on the shoulder for that duty, and i-if there's no objection from the council, I'd like to add that to that list. Hearing no objection, may I have a motion to ratify those appointments?
Show move.
May I have a second?
Second.
And a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Sobek?
Yes.
Councilmember Denver?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem August?
Aye.
Councilmember Leesmeyer?
Aye.
Mayor Mann?
Aye. Thank you all very much, really appreciate that, and I've said it before, I believe in continuity of leadership on these regional boards and commissions, and as we stay on those boards and commissions, we have a chance to move up into leadership roles on those. And Councilmember Leesmeyer's going to be moving up to a chairmanship position in 2017, right? And vice chair for this year, in 2016, so Mr. Leesmeyer will be the vice chair for the commissions that he's on. All right, thank you all for that. Onto the consent calendar. Are there any modifications? Hearing none?
I, I do have a request to speak.
Very well. Please call the public speaker.
Adrian Peters?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, and Ms. Sobek, your question?
Happy for you.
Here on Item 11.7, relative to Spirit Park, and I simply wanted to stand before you tonight and commend your staff for their diligent effort over the past year and a half in helping us implement this park. When we opened up the Audie Murphy Sports Park back in May of 2014, at that time, we had started our planning process with the planning department, and here we are, a year and a half later, ready to open up our second park, and it's going to be Saturday morning, as you know, at 11 o'clock. Looking forward to seeing everybody there. And we are currently in the process of our next two parks, north of Salt Creek, that are now in the planning process as well. So these things take a great deal of time and effort on the part of the staff, as well as my team, and we look forward to working with the City of Menifee to implement our next public parks down the road. So again, we look forward to seeing you on Saturday, and we look forward to your affirmative vote on this item for its acceptance this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Are there any other speakers on this, on the consent calendar?
There are no more.
May I have a motion?
Move.
Moved by Councilman Leesmeyer, or seconded by Mayor Pro Tem. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Denver?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem August?
Aye.
Councilmember Leesmeyer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sobek?
Aye.
Mayor Mann?
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Onto Agenda Item 12.1, we have a continued public hearing from the previous council meeting. It's a public hearing for consideration of annexation Number Three territory to be annexed to a community facilities district number 2015-2, and some adoptions and first readings down the road. Is there a staff report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, we have a brief staff report by Jonathan Smith, your Public Works Director, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Before you tonight is a consideration to annex the America's Tire landscaping area into the city's citywide CFD. The annual cost to provide maintenance for the landscaping items that will be annexed is $311. That ends my presentation.
Brief, just like the last five CFD public hearings were, thank you. Are there any questions of council to staff? Hearing none, I will open the public hearing at time 7:36. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody who wants to testify on this item?
No, there are no speakers.
Have we received any written protests or correspondence?
No, we have not.
And was it properly noticed?
Yes.
Were there any persons registered to vote in the territory of this district?
The Riverside County Register of Voters confirmed that there are no registered voters in the district.
Very well. Are the, are the owners of all the taxable property in the district, have they consented to holding a special election immediately following this public hearing?
Yes.
And do you concur that the special election that can be held immediately following this hearing?
Yes.
Very well. I'll close the public hearing at time 7:37. And do we have any other business on the item before we take motions on the resolutions?
No.
Oh wait, we have to take a motion on Resolution Number 15-481?
Yes.
May I have a motion on 15-481?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Pro Tem August?
Aye.
Councilmember Leesmeyer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sobek?
Aye.
Councilmember Denver?
Aye.
Mayor Mann?
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, have you received official ballots and other election materials from the landowners who did cast their votes on behalf of the owners of all the property included in that territory?
Yes.
And have you canvassed the election to return ballots, and do you declare the results and file the certificate of election?
Yes, the one and only ballot has been cast in connection with the election for Community Facilities District 2015-2 Maintenance Services, Annexation Number Three, with the yes vote.
Very well. I declare the election valid and ascertained by canvassing of the returned ballots. We have two more motions that we need to do. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 15-482?
Motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote on the resolution.
Councilmember Leesmeyer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sobek?
Aye.
Councilmember Denver?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem August?
Aye.
Mayor Mann?
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, could you please introduce the ordinance by reading the title?
Ordinance Number 2015-185, and ordinance amending Ordinance Number 2015-173, and levying special taxes to be collected during fiscal year 2016-17, to pay the annual costs of the maintenance and servicing of streetlights, parks, parkways, streets, roads, and open space, the operation and maintenance of storm drains, drainage systems, a reserve fund for capital replacement and administrative expenses with respect to City of Menifee Community Facilities District Number 2015-2 Maintenance Services. And this is for first reading, and the motion is to include scheduling for second reading and adoption on December 16th.
Thank you. Is there a motion to introduce as presented?
Show move.
And a second, we have a motion by Mr. Denver, seconded by Mr. Leesmeyer. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Sobek?
Yes. Aye.
Councilmember Denver?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem August?
Aye.
Councilmember Leesmeyer?
Aye.
Mayor Mann?
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Attorney, for coaching us to hold this one over for a technicality. We appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Onto, we have no discussion items for tonight, and that brings us to our city attorney reports. Mr. Melching?
No report this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you. City Manager Report, Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We do have a public works update for you tonight. It's been a couple months since we've had one. There's many projects going on throughout the city. Mr. Smith, our Public Works Director, City Engineer, will rifle through several of the projects and where we are in the process, and give you some statistics on our new street maintenance public works crew. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Mayor and Council. I have a brief update of public works activity that is currently going on in the department. Here's a quick snapshot of the projects that the department's involved in, just going to highlight a few on this list. Newport Road Widening Project West, that's Han to Bradley, is under preliminary design. That design is scheduled to be completed this February. The Newport Road I-215 Interchange is currently on schedule. Scott Road I-215 Interchange Right-of-Way Acquisition continues. The Holland Road Overpass Design is 85% complete, and that design should be completed in April. The improvements at Salt Creek and Bradley are also under design. Stop me if you have any questions.
Just a question on the Holland Road Overpass timing. I, I get the 85% design complete. What's the status of the EIR, and when can we actually release an RFP to take bids for construction?
If all goes the way it's going right now, we could advertise an RFP for construction, having, having the budget available in the spring of this year.
Assuming, assuming we don't get too much rain, probably too, would hamper that a little bit.
Weather, barring any weather, yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Leesmeyer?
Yeah, Jonathan, on the, on the Holland Road Overpass, when the engineering firm came to us, correct me if I'm wrong, they came to us and asked us about what sort of facade we wanted to put on the side of the abutments.
Correct.
Was a decision ever rendered there?
Uh, yeah, yes, it was. The overwhelming response was to have a mountain motif that blends in with the background that you, that you see when you're looking at the abutments towards the east.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
I got a question. Mr. Mayor?
Yep, Mr. August?
I think you probably know what I'm going to ask about, and that, that would be the Bradley Bridge over crossing, and we've discussed that.
Uh huh.
You talked about some problems we're having with county agencies on that, so I, I wanted to ask the same question the mayor did. I said, when do you expect an RFP to go out? But I didn't think that I would, but what I want to know is, how are you coming along with the county as far as what the requirements for, for the city determine what the flow is going through the covert surf?
Yes. Since that discussion, we've been able to conclude our conversations with the county and agree on a, a volume of water that that area, that flows through that area. And so we're, we're continuing with our design to accommodate that flow.
Right, and that was Riverside Conservation and the Water District as well, right?
Correct.
So, no, no timeframe for RFP yet, right? A little early for that, right?
It's just a little early, still on schedule.
Keep asking, okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Currently, Public Works is overseeing 124 active land development projects within the city limits, and inspecting the grading activity on 22 tracks, as well as approving building pads for 15 tracks that are actively building homes. This is a comparison of the permit activity in the department to date compared to last year. Right now, we are on schedule to double the permit activity of last year. Public Works recently completed the Encanto Road resurfacing project, which included a half mile of new resurfacing on Encanto Road. On the left is a before picture of the work, on the right is an after photo. Public Works also recently completed the Antelope Road resurfacing Safe Route to School project, which newly paved Antelope Road from Monroe to Watson, also included the construction of new curb gutter and sidewalk and pedestrian ramps. On the left is a photo of before the improvements, on the right, photo after the improvements.
Is that, is that our, that's not our first Safe Routes to School project, is it? We had, we had a, we had a Quail Valley one.
Correct.
Another one up in District Four before. This is the third one, I believe?
This, this is a third or fourth one.
Okay, great.
I've lost track, but yes, we've done a few.
Excellent.
In preparation for El Nino, Public Works has been actively repairing and cleaning storm drains throughout the city. The photo on the left is a recently reconstructed drainage inlet on a road in Quail Valley. The photo on the right is a recently repaired roadway shoulder with added erosion control to prevent the roadway from being eroded out in the rains to come. Public Works, during the month of October, received 68 requests that generated 68 work orders for various street maintenance items. I will highlight that 11 of those items were weed abatement involving tumbleweeds and other weeds within the public right-of-way. Also, Public Works has completed the construction of the traffic signal at Alder Gate in Menifee Road. Photo on the left. Photo in the middle is a recently completed Bradley Road-Holland Road traffic signal. Photo on the right is the current construction of the Garbani Antelope Traffic Signal that shows the recent widening and paving in preparation for the construction of the traffic signal.
Mr. Leesmeyer?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask about the Garbani Antelope that Katie brought up. Is there a restriping that's going to go along with that to help kind of make those lanes the right width?
Yes, that is correct.
Mr. August?
Question, I think we might have to go back a slide, but as far as Marietta Road from Ethnoc down to Rouse Road, do you have any estimates, or, I've got some complaints on that road, Marietta Road?
Uh huh.
For, do you have that calculated, any of your systems for repavement or whatever?
There currently is no timetable to expand that to four lanes.
Figure answer.
There currently is no timetable to expand that to four lanes. It's in our CIP, but it's unfunded.
What about the cracks and seals, as there's nothing to resurface what's there right now?
Well, we have a crack sealing program in our pavement management program. I'm sorry I jumped the gun, I thought you were going to ask about the four lane. I'll let Mr. Smith answer about the crack sealing.
So, let me, let me just bounce back to the first slide. The pavement management plan, the street selection is currently under review, and that's what, that's what we're doing. We're looking at what streets are going to be cracked sealed following by a seal code.
Okay. Mr. Johnson?
I just wanted to go back to the right turn lane at Garbani and Antelope. I, I don't believe in, correct me if I'm wrong, and maybe you can further explain. The additional asphalt that was put there is not the width of a lane, it's additional asphalt currently for the project, correct?
That is correct.
So, so it is not built right turn lane that's too shallow, correct?
That is correct, unfortunately.
It will be restripped, and you will see the, the appropriate lane width when the striping and when that project is completed, correct?
That is correct.
Excellent.
That ends my presentation. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Denver?
Encanto, I want to compliment you and compliment the whole city on the way Encanto looks. I got to watch that every day, morning, middle of the day, and afternoon. What a bunch of work those guys do. I've never seen so many different things put on top of a road, then taken off, and then put on again and taken off. It's amazing, and it really looks great, it's going to be wonderful. However, was wondering, it's only two-thirds, the yellow stripe only goes two-thirds the way. The last part that's at the extreme northern part, if you want to call it that, of that road, doesn't have it. Is that going to be put on?
Um, the, the volume of traffic drops significantly when you get to that part of the road, and doesn't really require that type of striping. That's why it wasn't extended.
Yeah, it has no striping there at all, just odd. When it was, came up on Facebook, people are asking questions about it.
Councilmember Sobek?
Jonathan, I want to thank you for also working at that Antelope in Garbani. As I met with many homeowners in that district, that has become a very, very dangerous intersection. Can you tell me... Can you tell me possibly when the light is, you know, supposed to be installed there?
So barring any unforeseen circumstances with weather, the signal should be operational in April.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Does that conclude your report?
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, do you have other city manager updates?
Thank you. One more. Community Services, and this will be an events update by Robert Lennox, your Community Services Director.
Thank you, City Manager Johnson, Mayor, Council. Good evening. No fancy slides today, just a couple of dates to update you on for the month of December. Events that are planned by the department and some by the community. First and foremost, as was mentioned earlier by Adrian Peters from Brookfield Residential, the grand opening of Spirit Park is coming this Saturday. It is at 11:00 a.m. at the park. Prior to that, earlier in the morning at 9:00 a.m., at K San Siro Senior Center is Breakfast with Santa. Currently, there are a few tickets still remaining for the 11 o'clock session. So if there are community members that want to still get tickets, they can. However, that is also the same time as the Spirit Park opening, so not much time, but still some. The next event is on the 12th, the following Saturday, which is the tree lighting, annual tree lighting event, Christmas tree lighting event at the Menifee Town Center Roundabout. That will begin at 4:00 p.m. and go till 8:00 p.m. Something to note, this year, we have two points of entry, one on Newport at Town Center Drive, and then the primary point of entry for public parking will be on La Piedra at Town Center Drive. So there'll be reader boards out directing traffic to make it a little easier to access the site from both locations. Hopefully, folks can get in and out much easier this year. And that one starts at 4:00 p.m. and goes until 8:00.
And what time do you want us there?
The actual tree lighting will occur at 6:00 p.m., and Santa will be coming slightly before that time. Also, the day after that, there's a community group, Chabot of Temecula, will be conducting a menorah lighting at 5:00 p.m. at the same site. They've created a relationship and gotten permission from region properties to do that, so I wanted to share that. And then two items that will be coming back to council on the 16th of December at the next meeting. One is the long-awaited review and approval, hopefully, of the Parks, Trails, Open Space, and Recreation Master Plan. A 12-month process. This culminates a lot of effort and community outreach on determining what kinds of needs we have in the city for open space and recreation for residents. And the second item is Community Services Midyear Report, where we will provide an update on all the great things that we've been able to accomplish in the first half-year of department in-house operations. So that concludes my report.
So if I understand...so that is going to be...those two items alone are going to be the lion's share of the agenda next meeting, I would imagine, with culmination of all that effort. So I know we're all looking forward to the master plan being presented, and thank you in advance and the Parks Commission for making that happen, and all the staff effort that's gone into making that go and bringing it forward. It's exciting. Just a quick note for my colleagues. As you know, I won't be at the Spirit Park opening on the 5th. I'll be out of town due to a family, a death in the family. So like I missed the Audi Murphy Sports Park opening, I'll miss the Spirit Park opening. But to that end, I don't want this as a discussion item tonight, but I think you would all agree that the park naming process that we had with our ad hoc committee, I think that worked exceedingly well. And down the road, when we get to that point, I'd like to duplicate that process if...when we get to it. Anything else, Mr. Johnson?
Just two more items. I wanted to commend our Public Works Department and our Community Services Department. You know, we do a massive amount of work with not much staff, and I really want to thank both of those organizations in our department structure, because we've transitioned a great deal of things over the last six months. And what I've seen, and I hope what our community and our council have seen, is more of a dedication to and effort, not only one to make the community stronger and more vibrant. We brought a public works team on, and they've done some phenomenal work. As you've seen, just in one month, there were 68 different work orders that were done by just four employees. Phenomenal work. And then with our Community Services Department, really, taking on the challenge and lifting up the west side of the City of Menifee, and taking over those parks, not only those, but then assisting with the opening of Audi Murphy Ranch Sports Park and the Spirit Park that we have now, and really improving our program. So I just wanted to give kudos to Mr. Smith and Mr. Lennox. That ends my report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson. Any future agenda requests from council tonight?
Yes, I'd like to make a couple.
Yes, Madam Sobek?
I'd like to have put on there the discussion of a Public Safety and Traffic Commission. Also, in...I would like to...in District Three, I would like to have a distinguished citizen award, that I would like to do for District Three.
Okay, so from a protocol standpoint, for agenda items, it requires a second from at least one council member to go on the agenda. Is there a second on a discussion item for a Public Safety Commission in the future?
I have a second on that.
There's a second, so that'll bring...we'll bring that back, staff. Is there a second on a District Three...could you restate the request?
It would be a distinguished citizen award.
There's a second on that. Why don't we...
Would you like me to explain that a little?
I would like maybe to expand it to make it not District Three-centric. If we're gonna do it, it needs to be consistent, and we'll probably...let's talk all about it when staff brings it back.
Okay. Wasn't sure how to handle that exactly. I actually have a little protocol of something we could use. Maybe staff could help with that.
Yeah, share that with staff, and they'll bring a staff report back. So we've got a second on that. Of course, it's gonna need to be...all these two new items need to be consistent with the timing of the other things that we have coming on. There are some other priorities with it, but we need to bring them back in a rapid and efficient manner as possible, consistent with the other items that we have already approved to come back previously. All right. Any others? Hearing none, we are adjourned for the night.